Well, good evening, everyone. I'd ask that you would please rise as we welcome Pastor Eric Ugrin. It says on our agenda, Calvary Chapel Church, but unless you've changed, you're from Cornerstone, so welcome.
Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for this beautiful city that we get to live in. Lord, we pray that all of us, the people of Fergus Falls, would be good stewards of this city, of the resources that you have for us. And as usual, Lord, I come here before you and ask for wisdom for the people of this council and the discussions that will go on tonight. Lord, we lay this before you and say, "Your will be done." Lord, please bless us, and we pray for great discussion here tonight. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's 5:30 Monday, March 6, 2023, and we'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 And we have a quorum. First item of business this evening is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseff. Good evening, Andrew.
Good evening, your honor, council members. We do have a few additions this evening to the agenda. Under the consent agenda, we'll have a fifth item, which is a motion setting a public hearing on April 17 at 5:30 for a municipal consent to the Highway 210 reconstruction and bridge replacement project that MNDOT is doing. You don't have to capture all that, but it's setting a public hearing. And then a couple of resolutions to add under ordinances and resolutions. First, a resolution of support for the renewal of the state historic tax credit, which was requested by Councilmember Kwame. And then a resolution accepting a Ferber Park grant. And there's some contractual obligations we need to talk about related to that.
All right. With that, I would entertain a motion approving the agenda as amended.
I'll make that.
Thank you, Brent.
Totally.
Thank you. Scott, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. A motion carries. Under public hearings, this evening, we have one public hearing. It's a project hearing for city project 5960, which is a 2023 street and water utility improvement project, number one, including Summit Avenue, Broadway to Oak, Linden Avenue, Broadway to Oak, Laurel Avenue, First Avenue to Broadway. And just as a matter of point of order for the audience to realize, we are not going to take action because the approval of this or action on this requires a supermajority. And since there's only six members of the council present this evening, we're going to table any action on this matter until a further meeting. However, we will still hold the public hearing this evening. So with that, Brian, would you like to introduce the subject for our audience?
Yes, thank you, honor. Yes, this is, we're going to be holding the preliminary project improvement hearing for public improvement 5960. Just a little bit of background, legal publications, along with the individual mail notices were sent to all benefiting properties. Approximately 75 notices were sent out. This is a type, this is a reconstruction project, reconstruction of the sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, and services, along with a Potemina Street section. This project consists of public improvement 5347, 5348, and 5349. As noted in my memo here, it stays a public hearing, March 6, 2023. We're proposing an interest rate for these special assessments not to exceed 7% with a term of 15 years. The estimated special assessment rate for this improvement hearing is $84.28. The total projected cost for this project is $2,289,000. The financing, just want to go over, we're requesting tentatively issuing PIR 429 bonds for cover the $323,000 that's specially assessed, also including PIR 429 bonds for the city's portion of this works, which is $499,000. We're anticipating San Cherry Sewer Fund funding $631,000, the Water Fund $692,000, and the Storm Fund as another funding source, an amount of $144,000. Based on that funding ratio, we're estimating fully funding this project at approximately $2.3 million. Just wanted to note, prior to this evening's hearing that we're going to be opening up, I did receive two objections for this project. One was, one received from Tim McCabe, I believe the address is 536 Linden Streets. The second objection, written objection, is from Empire Capital, located physical address of 402 North Broadway. Both those objections should be on your, before you too as well for additional hearings. So at this time, your honor, I'm just requesting open the preliminary improvement hearing for CP 5960.
Excuse me, we will do that at this time, and we will open the project hearing for public city project 5960. Anyone wishing to speak to the project, please step to the lectern.
Your honor, I did have a woman call me from Phoenix, Arizona, Maura Morburg, who lives at 523 West Broadway. She's still down in Phoenix. She will not be able to be through the meeting. She wanted to, that's why I talked to Andrew about, you know, if this was going to be broadcast, and she wanted me to let you know that she is in full favor of this project.
She's in favor. And what was her name, for the record?
Maura Morburg.
Maura Morburg.
523 West Linden.
West Linden. Thank you, Brent. Question for, well, we'll close the plug with him first. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, please.
I have a couple of questions.
Please, please.
Since I've not...
Sir, if you would, just for the record, just go ahead and state your name and address, and then...
Brandon Friedrich, 528 West Linden.
Thank you very much. Now, please proceed.
I have a disabled son at home that I have to have access to my house by, for state inspectors at all times. When you do this road improvement or whatever, is that going to be blocking the state inspectors to come to my house?
Brian, do you have a...
Answer.
An answer at this time, or...
No, I don't. I understand what you're concerned. Let me locate where exactly the property is. We always like to take advantage of side streets during, if there's not, or alleyways. And if they're not, we'll look to have ADA compliant access temporary using the sidewalk as well. So there will be times when it's prohibited, but I need to look at the, where the property is going to be located.
Send her the block.
Yeah. So there will be times, like other projects now, we try to maintain at least access on the walkways and everything around it, too.
Okay. My other question, since I'm...
Please.
The special assessments, how, according to this, we're liable to $4,700. How are we paying for that?
Bill?
So, couple options. One, you would have the option to, after you get a first bill on it, you'd have 30 days, correct, Brian, to pay without interest? And then, if you choose not to do that, then it is financed over 15 years through the city, so the city issues bonds to pay for the entire project. The city then pays principal and interest on those bonds, both for the special assessment side and the city portion. And then the city would levy a portion for our, the city portion. And then you, as a resident, could make those payments for 15 years. We bill those annually at the end of August each year, due by the end of September. So one payment per year over 15 years would be another option.
Or it's a $4,700 check upfront?
Yep, you certainly have...
I'm just asking because it's very vaguely worded.
Upfront, and there will be more information when we come back to the, what's called the actual final cost assessment hearing as well. But you could pay that all upfront without interest, and then, of course, it would be with interest over the 15 years, so amortize out.
Okay. When is the next meeting for the final assessment for that?
We haven't, we haven't determined that. This is the first, this is the improvement hearing. The plan is it will go request, we'll have to take action at the next April 3 council meeting. We'll have to finish the plans and specifications. We will take bids, and then we will update the assessment rules. That'll be the final cost hearing, once we have actual numbers for the project. And then we'll issue notices, once again, to residents, and here we'll be indicating what is your final cost. And at that time, that notice will have a lot more language in there in regards to the actual interest rate, terms, payment options. If there's any hardship, disabilities, they'll have a lot more language in that notice for you to apply for, if any applies at all, so.
Okay.
We're estimating here probably, hopefully here in May, working on getting that final cost hearing notice out.
Brandon, getting back to your first concern, are you, how far are you from the park? It's not very far. Five houses for access, because he's right on the west of the park there. Just went blank. Athletic Park, just to the west of that, five houses. So as far as, I don't know, maybe, maybe there could be something if they could cut through the park somehow. I don't know if, you know, Brian can probably help you out with that, but that would be a direction to go to on that.
Yeah, your honor.
We'll definitely take a look at that, that. I don't know the specific area, so I can't really comment on it, too. So we have an onsite resident project engineer on there, so if the project is successful, gets awarded, the council adopts it, then we'll issue newsletters out to give you our RPR's name out, that residents can specifically contact for any needs and everything. So we make them readily available to the residents.
Okay. So.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak this evening? Again, this is the preliminary hearing. Council will take action presumably at the next meeting, which will be March 20, April, did you say April?
We get April 3.
April 3, okay. April 3 is tentatively when the council would take action on the preliminary plans and specs. After those come back, there would be a final cost hearing. They would have exact numbers based on the bids that the council would take action on, okay? So with that, we'll close the public hearing, and the issue will be tabled until April, the first meeting in April.
Your honor?
Yes.
Can I ask a quick question about the project? You know, the, some of the complaints reference that the amount of special assessment will be higher than an increase in the value of the property. Isn't this similar to the situation we ran into over on, over off of Sunset back there where...
Minnesota happened.
Minnesota.
Yeah, yeah. And are we, I mean, would we be looking at facing something like that again?
We now do appraisals for each, Brian goes through the appraisal process for each PIR to make sure, are these within acceptable levels of increasing the value? Is that a fair statement, Brian?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So that's, in this particular one, it would be their opinion that it's not going to increase the value. Okay. All right, thank you.
We adopted that policy to get these properties appraised prior to, so that we have our gun there, our thing in our roll here.
Yeah, I remember that some action was taken, I just wanted to confirm.
Because if it doesn't appraise out, then you can't do the project.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Rolf, thank you, Tom. There are no bids to award this evening, and there are no items for consideration under petitions and communications. There's five items in, under the consent agenda, including item number five, which is not on the board. Again, to repeat, that would be a motion setting a public hearing on April 17 for the 210 bridge replacement project. If anyone has any questions relating to any of those items, we can remove them. Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution approving the consent agenda.
I'll offer that.
Five items. There's a resolution in a second. Thank you, Tom and Scott. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight we have three items. The first being a consideration of, four, I'm sorry, four. First is a consideration of a resolution approving a joint resolution for annexation with Fergus Falls Township, and I will call on our city attorney, Rolf Nicomal.
I can take it, too, Rolf.
Thank you, your honor. I'm sure the city administrator is well versed in this as well.
All right.
Thank you, your honor, council members. I feel like I've lived this for a few months, so I'm happy to speak to it. As you all know, we've been working with Fergus Falls Township to find a mutually acceptable resolution to the 160-acre annexation for PPTF LLC, which is just off of County Highway 116, and happy to report that we've reached an agreement that is acceptable to all parties. I will just quickly give a shout out to Councilmember Hicks. He was appointed by the city council several months ago to help with the negotiation. He's been very helpful in those efforts, and we had several different conversations and meetings, and he was a willing participant and a very active participant, so thank you to him. Just want to cover quickly some of the highlights of this joint resolution. The township will be acting on it at 6 o'clock tonight as well, so if both bodies approve it tonight, we'll get that submitted, and the order will become official relatively quickly here by the end of the week, I expect. The PPTF property, which is 160 acres, will be annexed immediately upon that order. PPTF LLC has agreed to pay $15,000 to Fergus Falls Township within 30 days of the order, so that's not coming from the city, that's coming from the property owner. If an egg processing plant is built on this property within five years of the order, PPTF has agreed that they will pay an additional $15,000 to the township. And we did remove the northernmost 50 feet of the property from the annexation. That was something that the township felt strongly about, so we weren't contiguous to the ethanol plant. And you can see that noted on the map up there on the screen, where it calls out that 50 feet on the northern edge of the, of the northernmost parcel there. The resolution also lays out the orderly annexation of the ethanol plant property, which is, for reference, about 121 acres shown there on the map. City, through this resolution, agrees that it will not initiate annexation of the ethanol plant for 20 years by ordinance or through city petition. However, if the property owner, the ethanol plant, wishes to be annexed, the township would not contest to that in any way. If the annexation of the ethanol plant happens in the next 20 years over the life of this resolution, the city would have to reimburse the township for five years of the existing real estate taxes on this parcel. So that would be the value at the time of annexation, and that can be through a lump sum or on an annual basis, which is very standard in orderly annexation agreements. You see generally anywhere from two to six years, and five has been kind of the number that the city of Fergus Falls has, has used with our various townships. Unless this agreement is fully executed, and by that I mean the ethanol plant being annexed, the annexation agreement will terminate December 31, 2042. Both parties certainly have the ability to extend that if they wish. And then I will note, we delayed this enough because we had to do a 10-day notice in the newspaper. That took place on February 22, so we're good to go. Like I mentioned, the township's holding a special meeting this evening to get this done, and we thank them for that. And then I mentioned in my memo that there was a $3,500 fee to the Office of Administrative Hearings. In talking to them today, they, we had our communication crossed a little bit there. It's actually $400, so significantly less than, than what the filing fee is. That was pertaining to if we had a contested annexation. So those are kind of the highlights of the agreement. It's fairly straightforward. Both the township attorney and the city attorney worked very closely on drafting this and making sure it was in a format that was acceptable to both of them, and if the council wishes, they can proceed this evening with the resolution.
Thanks, Andrew. I'd just say, echo your comments. Thanks to Councilmember Hicks. Thanks, thank you to you. Thanks, Rolf. I know this has been a lot of work from a lot of people, but thanks to all involved, and this is a good thing for projects that we are working on. So with that, would someone like to offer resolution?
I'll offer.
Thank you, Scott.
Second.
Thank you, Brent. Any questions?
Question?
Yes, please, Scott.
Just for what it's worth, that stripe of 50 feet in there is an advantage to the city or not? In what way? What's the, what's the gain one way or the other as far as that?
Basically, that makes, that the ethanol plant does not touch the city limits. So without touching the city limits, we cannot annex them automatically. We're going to have to, other than a 100% petition from the property owner. So if, if city property touches the city, and we think it's a good idea to bring that property into the city there, and it's less than 120 acres, there are ways that we can bring that into the city without, you know, approval from, from individuals. And so the whole idea of that 50-foot strip is so that it would take away our argument that we could just automatically bring them in, even if the ethanol plant did want to come in. So the 50-foot buffer was actually offered by the property owner, because we were, we were wanting to just get the whole parcel, and so the property owner said, "Well, what about if I took 50 feet off the top and not had that come in? Would that make the township more at ease?" And it did.
Very good.
Does that also, Rolf, has to do with even touching on a corner? That would be the same situation, too, I think, isn't it?
Touching is touching. Corners, touching, touch, so.
Yeah, and for reference, if, Lynn, can you scroll down just a hair? You'll see the red boundary there. That's the city limits today, so we are just contiguous on that one corner. Yep.
Any other questions for city staff? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number two is a resolution approving a modification to the Lake Region Healthcare Bonds, the conduit debt. We'll call on our city finance director, Bill Salmor. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening. Thank you, your honor, council. Before you is a modification to some conduit debt bonds that the city issued for Lake Region Healthcare back in 2014, I believe it was. When we do that, basically, we act just as a conduit, just what the word says, that we can, in essence, issue bonds, and then we loan them to the organization. They get the tax exempt rate, and then the city has no liability for those, so we can never be forced to levy a tax to pay those. It's all on the organization, so on Lake Region Healthcare. You can do that, you know, for healthcare facilities, nursing homes, is basically what we've been doing it for over the last number of years. Well, the London Interbank Offered Rate, LIBOR it's called, is getting phased out here in 2023. That was in the agreement for this variable rate, and the bank is looking at making that go with the treasury rates, is what's in here, the five-year and the 10-year treasury rate. You're, you're going to see this across the industry as well, since LIBOR is going away. It impacts us here at this one. So we're just asking you to approve this amendment. It would be then this alongs with Bremer Bank that would be approved. And again, it doesn't change the agreement for the city at all. The city is not on the hook for these bonds, but since they are in our name, we do have to approve that benchmark moving from LIBOR to treasury.
Thank you, Bill. And we could do this through a resolution? Someone like to offer that?
I'll offer that.
Thank you. Tom? Thank you, Laura. Any questions for Bill? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Item number three is consideration of a letter of, a resolution of support for the state historic tax credit program, and I believe, Councilmember Kwame, if you're, are you okay to speak to this?
Briefly. Yes.
Please, go ahead.
Those who get the newspaper probably or may have seen in the week, in the March 1 edition, an article titled "Historic Tax Credit in Limbo Again." And we, as a council over the, in the past, have had a resolution in support of this tax credit, and I'm asking that we would do that again, as it comes before the state legislature, and they have the opportunity to, to include that in their proceedings. Last year, it would have probably happened before the end of the year, and a lot of things didn't happen. That was one of the things that didn't happen, and so we'd like to see that happen. It would, an example locally of where this has been used is on the Mill project, and that was able to be using this, and then shortly after they got that, is when it expired or stopped again. And so in order to make it available for anyone wanting to specifically use it at the RTC, we'd really like to see that be in effect again.
Thanks, Scott. And just to remind people, that the state off, has in the past offered a 20% match of the federal historic tax credit for qualifying properties. So that's what this is, and it's a reauthorization of that, up to 20% for the state match of the federal historic tax credit. Correct?
And so then those 20 and 20 put together is 40%, and that in effect levels the playing field for building new versus remodeling in a real short description. So with that, I'll offer the resolution.
Thank you, Scott. Someone like to... Thank you, Scott and Scott. Any questions? We can direct them to Councilmember Kwame or to the administrator, Remseff. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution of support is approved. Thank you, Scott. Item number four is consideration of support for Ferber Park Grant?
The acceptance of a grant.
Acceptance of a grant, even better.
Guy Taylor will...
Go ahead. Guy Taylor, our Public Works Director. Good evening, Guy.
Good evening. Thank you, your honor. Yes, I'll be seeking a resolution to authorize myself, the mayor, and city administrators sign a contract with the DNR for a federal recreation trail grant that was awarded to the city in the amount of $78,000. The grant award was actually $100,000. The city receives the 78, and Pedal Fergus Falls is covering the remainder, so there was a three-to-one match. And so, working with Pedal Fergus Falls, specifically Dave Sanderson, they were able to raise the funds needed for that match, which we're very grateful for. So the trail expansion is close to two miles, and it's, we actually started this process in January of 2021. It became a requirement because of the area that we needed to do an archaeological review. We received the results of that review in February, and it showed no significant findings in the area. So now we're to this point of getting the contract from the DNR, and so we need the resolution to go ahead and sign it, and then get bids and go forward with the construction.
Thank you, Guy, and thanks to Pedal Fergus Falls for the work on this, and specifically, as you mentioned, Dr. Dave Sanderson. Someone like to offer resolution to that effect?
I'll offer that. I like bikes.
Thanks, Tom. Second, Scott. Any questions? Or Guy? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Tonight, under presentation of claims, we have Bill's claims in the amount of $2,629,919.
Updated number.
We've got an updated number for the public. Hot off the presses, $2,637,942.48. And we can do that with a resolution.
I'd like to pull off the Pemberton one, just to talk about it.
Well, let's, let's get a resolution.
I'll make the resolution to pay it then.
Get the resolution on the, okay?
Second that.
We have resolution second. Any questions? We'll direct them to our finance director.
I would like to have that Bill explain to us. I know there's been a lot of things floating in there, but I want it out in the open, so I know exactly what it is.
And which one, which one is this?
Pemberton law.
Pemberton law?
I can speak to it.
Bill? And, okay.
Your honor, Councilmember Rachel's. In early January, there was a council member that came forward with a couple of different concerns related to the actions or behavior of another council member, both of those being election-related under the city code of ethics. That falls under my purview. When the complaint is made, and the way it reads within the city's ordinance is that the city administrator will investigate that immediately. Because those were election complaints, in my position, must remain neutral on elections because of the severity of the allegations or the concerns, and also just simply because of the sensitive nature of the city administrator investigating a concern from one council member regarding another council member, we made the decision to engage... regarding another council member, we made the decision to engage a third party or a neutral party to investigate those concerns. And so the $7,000 Pemberton bill is related to that independent investigation of those concerns and the matter has been concluded and it's time to pay that bill.
And it was concluded, there was nothing, no findings of wrongdoing on either, on the complaint?
Yeah, so the, the results, essentially the, one of the, one of the two allegations was at the level of the state in front of a three-judge panel, as far as I understand it. So the investigator said they wanted to let that process play out and they would determine the outcome of that. And the other was, the allegation was not substantiated because there were no witnesses that spoke to the investigator, so.
Andrew, if I could make a comment? Let's, let's, yeah, if you could go through the chair, we could. Do you'd like to make a comment? Yeah. May I? Andrew, were you?
Yeah, I, no, go ahead.
Okay. Scott?
My question was just that, I'm trying to figure out the basis of why we, the council, have to pay the bill because there was no findings and it was, they were, the allegations were untrue. And so I'm trying to figure out why would this wouldn't be a civil thing between the two and not through us, why we have to pay the bill? Is what my question is. I mean, taxpayers got to pay it, I don't know why. Trying to figure out why we have to pay it. My question is.
Sure. So do you, let's, let's answer, if, if there's an answer from anyone to that question, then we'll call on councilmember Kramer.
And don't get me wrong, I agree we got to pay the bill, but I just want to know, why are we paying that bill? It's, all, all it does is open it up to, if I have a complaint against somebody else, here we go with another investigation, another seven grand or whatever it is, and not have no basis to anything. And so that's, I don't want to see it happen again with no basis. You know, it's what I come, kind of coming through, no proof, so.
I don't, Your Honor, councilmember Rachel, I don't have a lot to add to that other than, you know, this was a cost that was incurred as part of the, the work of, of the city and it's pretty clear in the city code what the responsibilities are and, and I, I think that was the right move. I continue to believe that was the right move.
And I, and I agree that it was the right move.
But I don't have anything to add. If, if, if the council feels otherwise, I guess that's up for discussion.
I just want to know, we don't have the money budget for any of this stuff, nothing. We don't have extra in the, in our council budget, I don't believe. And it's got to come out of someplace. And so my question is, what's going to stop this from happening again? Because there's, you know, it was just, it was done by Al and it was done by Mike Mortenson. It was done, and those two were involved in it. And why are they, why are we paying their bills, what it is, what I'm asking? Why are we paying those bills?
Al, I'd like to speak to that, please.
Please.
First of all, I represent Ward Three. Mike Mortenson is a resident of Ward Three. This was a concern that came out and an issue that came out during a campaign run. I brought it up to Andrew because I'm the councilperson in that ward. If it would have been brought up before I was a council member, I don't know, I couldn't have brought it up at that time. This goes back two years ago. And as far as not paying that bill, Scott, I agree with you 100%. I don't think it should be paid because it's not discussed yet. There is one more meeting this week because Rolf couldn't make it the other week, so it got delayed a week for me to meet with him.
I was around all week last.
Oh, or the week before, I'm sorry, Rolf.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Just clarify that, sorry about that. I know that Mike couldn't make it that week, but the week before is the one you couldn't make it, so. So now this is finally coming up now this week. And because I had just spoke to Rolf about that earlier and Bill, if that should be paid or if it should not. And if it was my bill, I would gladly pay that. But I followed the procedure of the city and what code needed to be done and I brought it forward on behalf of Mike Mortenson. And that was my duty as a council member to do that. So did this citizen, this Mr. Mortensen, did he not have a chance to participate in the? Mike Mortenson, I, I mean, I don't know how much I should get into this, Rolf, or not. Because I believe that the attorney, from what I understand, has, has delivered her results. And I also believe that the three-judge panel at the state level has completely dismissed the allegations. But I think it's time to move on, quite frankly. I think we need to pay the bill and move on. And all due respect, Mayor, I just want to clarify that there was, with the portion of the bill and what was done, Mike Mortenson wanted to give his testimony under oath and the person who did the investigation did not want to take it under oath because he wanted it to be a legal document in his words. So after that, after that was not done, the case was closed because they did not want to take his testimony under oath, which I find kind of unusual, but I'm not an attorney. So that was, and then shortly after that, it was closed. So I think that's, needs a little bit more discussion. Thank you.
And I'll just go back to, just quickly, the opportunity was given to him all along and I, I believe and if we read, if you read the report, she come to the conclusion with nothing there. And if, I don't think his testimony, if he had wanted to give it, he would have gave it. So my question goes back and not about, how are we going to, accountability of this? Now, I could, tomorrow I could file something with Andrew and he'd have to follow through with it on no, with no basis. You know, as obviously found out, there's no basis to this charge. And so that's where I am at with this. I already, well, I want to vote, I want to, we got to pay Pemberton, we have to. Andrew approved, that's part of his job and we have to pay it. But what's going to stop this from moving forward? Obviously, I don't think this is going to, it's going to end unless we end it right here tonight.
I would certainly hope at some point we can move forward and get the work of the, of the city done and not continue to engage.
We need to finish it and move forward.
And this personal attacks against one another. I think it's, it's ridiculous. I think the, the state has weighed in. They've completely dismissed the allegation. The attorney who deals with this stuff locally has weighed in and, and completely dismissed the allegations. I believe it's time to move on, but I'll leave it up to the council. Mr. Mayor? Please, yes. I do agree with what you say, but there were two separate issues regarding campaign letters and there was another issue that I, I cannot speak about that is Mike Mortenson's issue that he had brought up. And I will not speak to that, but he will. And that's why he wanted it under oath. And I don't know why it wasn't taken under oath. And I think, Scott, I can't speak about Mike and I don't think you can make assumptions regarding Mike either. Because he, he wanted to testify under oath.
I'm just, I'm just saying he has the opportunity to do it and I don't, I just don't want this to happen anymore. I want to move on. And now we're going to have more meetings with Rolf and I don't, I just don't want to deal with this any, again because it's just not right that the citizens got to spend the money on it that we didn't have for all the frivolous, I guess you call it. So there's nothing there. And it's a matter of everybody's opinion. We, we hired somebody to do it and we live with that agreement. So that's what I, that's what I'm saying, so. Okay. I mean, I'm done. I won't.
And I'll be done too. I think we could talk about this all night, so. I hope we can move on. Thank you. That's, I'll be done as well. I hope we can certainly move on as a council because there's a lot of important work with the city of Fergus Falls, in my opinion. And I, I certainly hope that we can move on.
I agree.
We have a resolution in a second to pay the bills. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. There are no board committee or department reports this evening. There are no reports from staff or administrative officers. There is no old or unfinished business. There is no new business. I believe under miscellaneous announcements, councilmember Kwame had one.
I wanted to ask Guy if he could comment on, now that we're going into pothole season, if the public has got something they'd like to report? What's the best way to do that? To call his cell phone or to call the city hall office? What would be the best way for someone to bring that to our attention?
Your Honor? Your Honor, just one, what did he call it? I was, what kind of season?
Pothole season.
Pothole season, okay.
Pothole season.
What is he talking about?
Sorry. There's at least one between my house and city hall, but maybe there aren't any in your neighborhood.
That's the only one we've got. Yeah, it is the season and we've had crews out already.